the City of Daly City. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
You certainly may. Commissioner Prohanyo.
Here.
Vice Chair Pastor.
Here.
Chair Kelly.
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Meofuwo Poti.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd just second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to point out a correction to the minutes of our meeting of February 23. The minutes state that the meeting was called to order at 7:00 and adjourned at 6:20.
We did have a time machine that day, as you recall.
Yes, we did. So with that correction to 7:20 on the time of the adjournment, can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Director's report, athletic fees, field, gym, and tennis courts. Joseph?
Right, this is a carryover from our last meeting. It will carry over again this meeting, but I wanted to at least give you an update. Really timely article in today's San Francisco Examiner. I don't know if any of you had a chance to see it, but I wanted to share that with you.
Did not.
In a nutshell, we've been looking at the fees we're currently charging to reserve the ball fields, both baseball fields, soccer, and even the tennis courts when they are reserved, which they rarely are, but we do have a fee schedule for that. In the interim, what has happened is just an absolute explosion of youth soccer. And trying to deal with the rental of the two soccer fields in Daly City that we control has been a little bit problematic because there's so many competing interests. And this article is really about San Francisco, but some of the same players involved there are spilling across the border, competing for time on our two precious soccer fields. So quickly where we are in our soccer fields, the two we control are Geller Park, of course. And if I didn't inform you at the last meeting, I'll let you know now, that's only going to get worse because if you've been out there lately, that field's beat. It's about 15 years old, that surface. It was the first synthetic turf installed in Daly City, and it's well-used. And it had a projected life expectancy of eight years. It's on 15 now. That's the bad news. The good news is we are going to replace it this summer. The unfortunate thing, that takes us from two fields to one. That field's going to be out of commission probably starting early June, if it stays on schedule. And it's about a two-month or so process. What they have to do, they take the old surface off naturally. There's also some subsurface drainage problems out there, so when we've had rains like we have this year, there's been excessive puddling. So it's a little more involved than a carpet in your house. It's going to be a full-fledged construction project out there, right in the middle of summer. I mean, that wasn't by chance. We looked at the calendar, and typically that's when the usage drops a little bit because school's out, so a lot of the school teams are not around for the summer. So that's happening. The other field that we partially control is Polosita. Those two fields are rented pretty much year-round, and there just are not enough fields to go away. So we have been in conversations with one of the Daly City-based groups, the FC Strikers, also known as the Daly City FC Strikers. And it's youth soccer. And right now, they've got four youth teams. They're looking to expand, the boys are looking to expand, four girl youth teams, and desperate for home fields for their games, which they don't have right now. So we're going to continue the dialogue with them and see, with their, the strong interest in coming up with some criteria that we don't currently have, nor have we ever needed it, maybe giving priority to Daly City-based teams. You know, if you get, I think in San Francisco, 90% of the kids on a roster to play in the San Francisco fields are supposed to be San Francisco residents. We've never had a requirement like that. It's always been first come, first served. And until recently, it hasn't been an issue, but we have now, kind of like our swimming pool situation, we have more people that want field time than we have fields.
Well, don't some cities give preference to residents?
San Francisco is an example of the policy they have. It, you know, you have to be a San Francisco-based team, but that alone isn't enough because we've got a Daly City-based team that has a lot of San Francisco kids on it. So what San Francisco does, you have to have a San Francisco-based team, and 90, I believe it's 90% of the roster has to be San Francisco residents. We do not currently have a policy like that. It's one we're going to be looking at and hopefully involve more than just one club because there's three or four soccer clubs serving our area, plus they're starting to drift across the borders from the north and from the south.
Well, there's another one starting up, too. I get emails from them once in a while. A different group trying to put together another.
In Daly City?
Yeah.
Yeah, there may be one off our radar then, too.
Yeah.
FC Strikers is relatively new. There's still, their 501(c)(3) is still pending, but they've been around for a few years. And the surging popularity of soccer is mind-boggling. I think I read, and maybe it wasn't in this article, but this article says, I read recently, there are 8,000 new youth soccer players in San Francisco, 8,000 more than there were three years ago.
Well, look at what's going on in Santa Clara with the field next to the Levi's Stadium. You know, with the soccer.
Well, you know what, I certainly encourage you, I did not print in this article, I don't believe I did. I didn't print, print the comment section. If you, this is in today's Examiner. If you, if you go online and Google, get to this article, the thread of comments is really telling what's going. It really, you know, the reporter presents, you know, a news story. There's a lot of backstory. That got this onto the pages of the newspaper today.
Through the chair, is there any other sport that kind of crosses the time that the soccer is, are using, like?
Well, yes.
Baseball?
Yes. Soccer is looking to go year-round. So it has conflicts with baseball, it has conflicts with football, it has conflicts with lacrosse, and they all share fields. So, yeah, there's lots of, lots of conflict out there. And there's adult soccer competing as well. And some, I've got to say, we've had some adult soccer leagues that have been with us for many, many years, and they pay, you know, over the course of a year, they may end up paying $15,000, $18,000 for the use of the field. So ideally, we would have another half dozen soccer fields to go around. The reality is, we don't. We have spent way too much time with Google Earth, looking where would we put
Oh, yeah.
a soccer field if money fell from the sky. I even, I even took the president from the FC Strikers out to Dave Row Park. I don't know if you've been there. It's the park at Midway Village Bay Shore. It's underutilized, and there's a nice big green spot. And I will tell you, there is such a shortage of fields. I left one sport out, rugby. The Reardon Rugby Club, because they have nowhere else to play, is out in an unmarked field at Dave Row Park, which is a pretty cool setting if you've never been there.
Yeah.
But it's a little bit out of the way, you know, on the other side of Guadalupe Canyon, and there's no parking. It's all residential parking around there, you know, unless you park at Robertson School or something, so.
Well, any bit of land that's big enough for a soccer field, somebody wants to build houses on it, so it's kind of a, or any.
Well, and just the explosion in popularity.
Yeah.
You know, some of the critics saying, you know, "San Francisco should have anticipated this with all the new housing." But, you know, if you remember, it wasn't long ago, San Francisco was wondering what happened to all the families. They were priced out of the market. Now, we're seeing young techies are starting to have families of their own. And in fact, there's conflict there. About last year, if you saw the YouTube video, I think we may have talked about this at our last meeting, one of the soccer fields in San Francisco that used to just be open for kids to come play, well, they rented out, too. And Dropbox, one of the tech firms based in San Francisco, has a team, and they had rented the field, and they had their permit, and they showed up, and there were a bunch of kids there. And so these grown young men ended up, you know, throwing these kids off. In the video, it looked really horrible. And the reality is, the Dropbox guys had the permit to be on the field, but, you know, these were grown men throwing young boys.
Yeah, little kids, all you know.
And the kids, you know, it's their neighborhood, and they were used to playing there, so.
Wow.
Anyway, we are not done with this.
Well, we have the same issue with the gyms, though, sometimes.
The gyms, the swimming pool.
Tennis courts?
Tennis courts. And through the chair, since we have some members of the public that are here specifically for the tennis courts, if you have questions, I don't have anything for you to vote on tonight. This is probably going to work through the summer, is my guess, before we have a resolution on. And this all started out innocently enough. We realized we were starting to fall behind the market on some of our field rentals. That's where we started, was how do we compare? And then, if you remember from our last meeting, the rates are all over the board across the peninsula, and so many variables and regulations tied to the field rental policies, none of which we have historically had.
Now, I know that the next item on the agenda is our budget update.
Yes.
But with these fees, how is that going to impact?
Right now, is not factored in as part of revenues for next year. We kind of held, held that projection based on historical data. So it's, our fields are quite affordable. It's not going to be a huge spike in revenue.
Oh, yeah.
It'd just be a slight tick upward. And we'll talk about that on the next.
Through the chair, you know, on the subject of the soccer and availability, the non-availability when the field gets to be repaired at Geller Park, do you think that the high schools, which has football fields, that are not playing football in the summer, I don't think, might be a thought?
Yeah, great minds think alike. Through the, through the chair, there are two beautiful fields that we don't control in Daly City, one at Westmore High School and one at Jefferson High School. And that was the first question I asked when we were starting to feel the pressure. They're rented out, too. They're booked solid. So we, our current policy is we won't rent more than six months out.
Okay.
So people in and out know that to come in, and they will block six months' worth of field rentals. And the next guy comes in, and a day later, they're gone.
Yeah. So that's something, pardon me, that you might want to also discuss. I mean...
Yeah, we've talked about maybe shortening that two- or three-month window.
Yeah.
Like I said, this, historically, this was never an issue. This has really cropped up in the last two or three months.
And how awful would it be that if you had, say, you could have it for this quarter, but you can't book it in the next quarter, you have to skip a quarter, so that you can't monopolize it for six months?
We're going to look at all of those, and, you know, maybe at some point, we'll even...
I know that, I know that that sounds really awful, but to me, it would seem more fair than letting someone who knows come in on the fir-, you know, the 28th of December and book the first quarter, and come in on the 15th of March and book the next quarter. You know, I mean, it's...
Or maybe a lottery or something.
Yeah, something.
You know, I know, we're going to hear from some members of the public. Another huge disadvantage for us is the lack of lights. We do not, there are no lights at Polosita. So especially in the wintertime, when the sun goes down, it's dark out there. It's not safe to be playing sports. At Geller, the only lights out there are directed to the baseball diamond, not the soccer pitch. So that's pretty much in darkness. And I've never witnessed this, but we've, we've heard stories of people pulling their cars up and turning the headlights on so that, you know, kids can, can stay into the nighttime because there's no other place to go.
And I guess the cost of the lights is just outrageous, or?
You know, again, this is relatively new demand, so it's not something we've considered. Something we'll be looking into is, you know, there is room at Westlake. There are lights at Westlake. Now, I, the lights aren't great, but better than nothing, which is what we have at Polosita and Geller right now.
No, but in terms of looking at putting lights in, you know, I realize that, you know, Polosita's shared with the school district, but they've got all those nice, big, new solar panels up there. Maybe they could.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe there's even...
I mean, then it would just, pardon me, through the chair, then it would just be the cost of installation if you could have enough electrical.
Yeah, and I don't even have a ballpark, yes. I know John Madden was kind enough to put the lights in over at Jefferson High School, and I'm guessing he wrote a pretty big check to do that.
He did.
And if there's anybody listening tonight that wants to write a big check to help us with lights.
They would get a plaque with their name on it.
Oh, sure.
It'd be like John Madden Lights. These would be the next.
I don't know if Jefferson gave him any recognition or none.
I'd have to tell everyone I know that they did that for us, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Anyway, if there's no more questions, this might be the appropriate.
Absolutely.
We did have tennis courts on here, and that hasn't really been part of our discussion.
I don't know that they want to talk about fees so much as...
Conditionals.
It's, you can tie it together.
Okay.
Let's tie it in.
Unless you want to stick around.
You didn't get, you didn't get...
Well, excuse me.
We will ask you, through the chair, if you're going to speak.
Kay Christensen, you want to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay. You're Lois?
Lois Ann.
Okay. If you, yeah, please identify yourself and speak into the mic so we get it recorded, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm Lois Ann Endorf. I've been a resident here in Daly City since 1986, lived down the street from Westlake Park. And for years, I sponsored teams, tennis teams, out of Westlake Park. But as the courts became in more and more disrepair, and then the lights were removed, there are not so many teams playing out of Westlake Park anymore. There's no more daytime Peninsula League teams. And the three, or there are two teams that have played out of Daly City so far this year for the USTA League, and there's not one member on these two teams from Daly City. So, you know, I live here. I live right down the street. I'd like to go up to the courts and play. It used to be the hub of activity here, but people have just fallen away because of the lack of quality courts. The courts are in disrepair, and there are no more lights. So of course, I'd like to know when the courts will be upgraded. We should have, you know, you go to South City, they have a nice park. You know, Daly, or San Francisco's got to work on some of their parks, but they still have nicer parks than Daly City does. And yet, we are right here. We have nice facilities, or the potential for really nice facilities. So I'm wondering when this is going to be addressed. And I don't, you know, I don't know, what are the fee court, the court fees now in Daly City? I haven't looked for at least 10, 15 years because the lights were taken out in, what, 2008?
2009.
2009. And the teams just kind of said, "Well, we can't play here. It's just too hard. There's not, the courts are in disrepair. We're going to just go somewhere else." So, you know, I don't know what happens to the team fees, because I used to walk down and pay my fees for my reserving the courts in the middle of the day. And I think that Daly City has a ways to go to make our parks really, really functional. And I know that there are lights, that they took the tennis courts lights on, out, but they left the baseball field lights on. The baseball field lights are far brighter than any tennis light I've ever seen, and probably disrupt neighborhoods more than tennis court lights. I'd be happy to pay for lights, you know, put the quarter in or put the dollar in, which would have offset the costs. I would really like to be able to sponsor a USTA team out of Daly City and have maybe a few Daly City residents on it. But right now, the courts are not in enough, you know, no, but I hear from my colleagues who come from other cities, when they have to play in Daly City, they complain bitterly about the courts. So that's what I have to say.
You have any answers?
See if, are you going to speak to?
She's going to re, she'll say the same thing I said.
She's echoing you. Okay, so, it's a repeat.
Yeah, through the chair, I'll attempt to answer. I don't disagree with anything you've said. The courts at Westlake are in a terrible state of disrepair. Courts at Geller Park are worse. And worst of all are the courts at Westmore, which I don't know if you knew were there. Westmore High School does still use the courts at Westlake Park, even in their current state. I believe the high school pays free, and I want to say the other fee is something like $5 an hour. I could be wrong, and I didn't bring that with me.
So I play a team out of San Francisco. We pay $10 per court hour. So if I have three teams playing on a date, I'll pay 90 bucks. If I have five teams, it's 150 bucks a day to play. So $5 an hour, I'd be happy to play if the courts were in better repair. I'd pay even more if the courts were in better repair.
One of the reasons of...
Geller is not worse than Westlake. Westlake is much worse.
I actually have a professional opinion that is, that is contrary to that.
No, Westlake is much worse.
Anyway, that, I'm not here.
And Westlake should be the jewel of, you know, Daly City's parks. It's right there in the heart of Daly City. It's, you know, they've got a nice gym, they've got the senior center, they have great parking, they've got a nice baseball field.
And we did fix the parking lot.
Yeah.
Did you notice?
Yes.
That was $400,000. I will try and answer some of the, like I said, I don't disagree with anything that she said. The lights were removed in 2009. I think that was a terrible, terrible mistake. I wasn't there. I'm not taking credit for that move. The sad part about that, when the lights were taken down, the poles rusted out. So to get lights back, they have to be completely rebuilt, which I think is a great idea, by the way. So the courts that I mentioned were evaluated by an independent paving, a company that specializes in tennis courts restoration and stuff. Daly, another disclaimer, this is Recreation Commission. The courts are maintained by our Public Works Department, which is a separate department. But with that said, I will say, they have consulted with us, and they have put together the two-year capital improvement plan for the City of Daly City. And I lobbied hard to get the tennis courts on there. They are on there, but it's not happening next week. It's probably over the next two years. The cycle begins in June. My understanding is the courts at Westmore are so bad, those might not even get done, but, but Westlake and Geller would be completely resurfaced. I think adding lights would be great. And again, this isn't, this isn't my argument against the little pay thing. I understand that when they looked at those, the vandalism to those things outweighed the cost recovery. So if they're going to put lights up, they're probably just going to set them, you know, have a switch or have them automatically on until, you know, 10 o'clock or whatever the curfew is. But I don't think lights are in the short-term plan, but I think they should be, and I'll definitely convey that to the Public Works folks. I think it was, it was a terrible disservice when, when the lights were turned off in 2009 as a cost-saving measure. I think in the long run, turning those lights off now put us in a position where we've got non-functional lights at Westlake. I've suggested they turn them back on at Geller because the demand is there, too. And it's, from what I understand, again, it's outside my area of expertise, but I think there, it's a matter of flipping a switch or setting a timer or something. So those lights evidently are still functional, the ones at Westlake. They had to physically remove them. They were so rusted, they thought they posed a safety hazard. I don't know if I addressed...
Through the chair, when you mentioned that the tennis courts are under the guise of the Public Works?
Yeah, in terms of the maintenance and repair.
Maintenance. Yeah, are they also be the approval arm for what type of surface gets put on there?
They, they probably, through the engineering division of Public Works, would probably put specs together, working with somebody in the field. They're not going to
Yeah.
create specs that, that aren't consistent with what the standard is out there.
Yeah. The, where I'm moving towards on that is if we can, if they can, when they do their research, incorporate maybe ideas on surfaces that'll last maybe twice as long as they would normally last, because sometimes the elements can eat away at whatever gets put on.
I think in this case, it's just been years of neglect. I don't think, I don't think it's the elements necessarily.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
If I can just mention, when Mike Gutierrez was working for Daly City Park and Rec, and he formed the Daly City CTA, Community Tennis Association, and there was a lot of activity in Daly City. In fact, there was the Daly City Open. I was one of the first winners, along with Kay's husband. They resurfaced the court, but they, they had some sort of a secondary, just kind of a cosmetic thing. So those courts have not been truly resurfaced down to their underpinnings in many, many, many years, probably since before I moved here. And, you know, there, you need to have somebody who knows what's going on with, with tennis courts when you go to resurface.
I think that's, I think that's why they had someone, an independent person go and evaluate them.
The other question I would have is, with the Community Tennis Association, is it still active in Daly City?
Never heard of it.
Is there still, it's still listed in the USTA website as being there, but it...
I'll ask around. I've, I've never heard of that group.
I remember Mike running the tennis program. Some of my family members have gone through, you know, girls have gone through his tennis program since they were infants. And now they teach their kids tennis.
It's a, it's a great family sport, and, you know, we certainly well want to see everybody out there playing, and all ages, not just those of us who have time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input.
Okay. Budget update?
It's actually a good segue into budget. This is, I want to say premature, but this is early on in the process, and I just wanted to put it on your radar. And for the benefit of the people who feel our facilities aren't up to snuff with, with San Francisco and South City and other cities down the peninsula, you know, you've been around a long time. You know, the Daly City has always struggled financially, and we're dependent on two main revenue sources here, and it's property tax and sales tax. And the recession was not kind to the City of Daly City in terms of our revenues. And, you know, unlike South San Francisco that has Genentech and Columbus Meat and, you know, all of the industry and wealth to our north, we are a desert when it, when it comes to revenues. Our budgets are a fraction of what our communities are to the south of us and to the north of us. So we're the Department of Library and Recreation Services, and I shared with the Library Board at our last meeting, Redwood City's, roughly, it's actually smaller than Daly City, their library budget for their public library is more than double of Daly City's. So that's where we are. That's the reality, is we have far fewer resources here. And I know I'm not telling you anything you haven't known. And we now are preparing for the next two-year cycle, both for capital improvements and for the operating budget, general fund operating budget. And it's not looking good. And so I did, I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, depending, the numbers are constantly changing as we're, you know, new reports are coming in monthly and tracking revenues and expenses. Expenses in Daly City have greatly outpaced revenues. And this is not new information. This has been presented to the council, you know, at least going five years running now. The gap is widening, and we're looking at another cycle with a pretty substantial structural deficit between, you know, expenses up here and revenues down here. And the conclusion that you might draw from that is what the reality is going to be. There's, there's going to be more belt tightening, more cuts, hopefully not on the, the capital side, because that's, that's money that is, is allocated for projects. So that, that money is going to be saved. But the operating budget is totally tied to our general fund revenues, which have been down or flat when expenses have gone up. You know, the other contributing factor Uh, you know, the other contributing factor is police, police management, fire, fire management, Teamsters and AFSCME, uh, bargaining units have all gotten, what I would say are very much deserved, uh, pay hikes for the first time in a long, long time. Um, that, that didn't make the deficit issue easier. Um, the other thing is, you know, CalPERS has, has reevaluated their actuarial, um, calculations, and, and the hard reality is pensioners, retirees are living longer. Um, Daly City has a very generous pension for its employees. And, and the reality is, like many public employees in California that use the CalPERS system to, to fund their, their pensions, we're growing, we are living longer. So the fees to sustain CalPERS have gone up exponentially. And so Daly City's been hit with some, some pretty heavy, uh, increases in our, in our retirement fees. And, and retiree, um, healthcare, you know, it's with some of our longtime employees, twenty-year-plus employees have some, uh, a, a small benefit there for employee healthcare. If you've looked at the cost of healthcare, healthcare over the last ten years, it has risen far, far steeper than the revenues in Daly City have grown. Um, there is, there's some hope on the horizon. Um, like I mentioned, we are very property tax and sales tax dependent. Um, the expansion that's happening right now at Ceramone is certainly gonna help that, you know, when Dave and Buster's and the theater and the other amenities come online. Um, you know, as a former planning commissioner, you're probably tracking that there's been substantial addition to Daly City's housing stock in the last few years. Uh, Christopher Court, Christopher, what are they calling that? Former Christopher Columbus School. I think there's about seventy-two new single-family homes out there that, not surprisingly, in today's market, those, those homes are, are going for a million, a million four. So, you know, when, when the property tax starts coming in, there is hope on the horizon. But typically, the collection of that lags about a year or so. And, uh, I, I didn't intend on giving a whole civic lesson today, but the reality is too, we don't collect, the city of Daly City doesn't collect that money. It's collected at the state and redistributed through the county. Schools get a big chunk of it. Um, special districts, everything from the, you know, mosquito abatement district to the sanitation districts and, you know, all the other, you know, pieces of pie. Or, or, so, so by the time it comes down to the city level, we're getting a very small sliver of your sales tax dollar. And, and may, maybe that's something, I can actually share the breakdown of that if, if there's an interest in doing that. But I, I, I put that on the agenda tonight just so that as discussions go forward, no one's caught off guard that this department may very well be looking at some, some changes in the coming year, or coming two years. Um, the city council, as it stands today, is scheduled to take a preliminary look at the Department of Library and Recreation Services budget at their regu, uh, excuse me, at a special budget study session on May sixteenth. Um, I will communicate that again, um, maybe email to all of you if, if there's an interest in coming and, and hearing. We'll, we'll be doing a full presentation to the city council with some proposals at that time. Um, I do caution you though, and again, I know you've all been here for a while, and you know, those dates seem to be fluid and changing constantly. But as of this afternoon, uh, May sixteenth at seven o'clock was our targeted time.
Wasn't that also in the email you sent us?
I may, I may have sent that to you. It's, it's tough going. Um, yeah, I agree, Daly City deserves a lot more than we've been able to afford to, to give. And it, it was a small victory in getting that parking lot repaired because I don't know, walking to the tennis courts, if you noticed the state of that parking lot, which probably predated the tennis courts. Um, we had really deep potholes, and with the clientele we serve at the senior center, that was, that was a major safety concern. So that was in such disrepair, they had to, the main part of the lot, they had to do a complete overlay, which meant they had, if you live nearby, you know, the noise was, was pretty bad. They had to grind the old lot up. Uh, and then they hit the reins and stopped. They're still, they're, they haven't finished that, they gotta go back and put another layer between the gym and the offices and, and stripe it. But, uh, tennis courts, um, I hear ya, and, and if, if you're into soccer, the state of the soccer field at Gallert is, is really deplorable. And I'm really looking forward to having a new wonderful, state-of-the-art synthetic soccer field at Gallert Park. We've got a long ways to go, for sure, but we're, we're trying. And I, I appreciate you taking the time to come down.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner's Report. Um, I'd like to mention the Women's History Month event.
What?
The Women's History.
Oh, sure.
Month event. Um, I attended, and I thought that the attendance was very poor. And, um, I would like to certainly suggest that we do a much better job of publicity next year than we did this year because I saw very little publicity. And I would also, um, like to suggest that, since it is a women's event, that the entertainment be women and not men. Not that they weren't good, that was a very enjoyable evening, but, um, the feminist in me would like to see more women involved in the event.
And, and as I recall, Chair Kelly did volunteer to be on the planning committee for next year's event, so. And I know the, uh, the Arts and Culture Commission has expressed interest in, in being part of that planning, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a nice thing, and it, I'd like to see it with a little, little growth around the participation. Teresa, do you have anything? Kat?
No, I'm good here, thank you.
Okay. Um, announcements?
Yeah, no, no, I'm waiting for that announcement.
Announcements and communications?
We have lots of announcements. Um, starting with this Saturday, one of the hallmark events of the, the year is Spring Fun Day over at Policy to School on the wonderful turf field that we share with them. And a, a big thanks goes out to the Daly City Host Lions for, without them, this event would not happen. Um, that is at TR Policy School, this Saturday, March sixteenth, from eleven to one. Uh, I did not look at the forecast, but, you know, hopefully we can squeeze it in between raindrops. And that's, it's free, it's totally free, it's, uh, it's paid for by the Daly City Host Lions Club. And that's for ages two to twelve, and certainly the whole family is invited to join in on the chaos and, uh, and the fun there.
It's a fun day.
That's why it's called Spring Fun Day, and egg hunt. Um, also coming up, we have a couple of camps, uh, Aqua Camp at Giamona Pool. Well, the kids, for the first time that we can remember, the five school districts and the Catholic schools in Daly City have the same spring break, which was good because that, that provided an opportunity to have swim camp at Giamona Pool. So that's gonna run from, uh, March twenty-eighth through April first. That's for kids, uh, six to twelve years. I might also say it's not on your agenda, but there's also, for the first time in many, many years, at, uh, Westlake Park and Pacelli Gym, there will be a spring camp. Uh, we heard from quite a few parents that had no place to put their kids over the, over the spring break. So, we sort of improvised a quick spring camp, and registration for that is happening right now. It's next week, so.
Oh.
On Friday, April first, again, at Giamona Pool for the older kids, a thirteen-to-eighteen-year-old group, age group, there's a spring social, and that's from seven-thirty to nine. And there'll, there'll be some music and concessions and recreation swim all incorporated at Giamona Pool. Uh, we're encouraging also kids, or I should say teens fifteen and over, uh, to take advantage of the lifeguard class that's being offered this spring, April fourth to the eighth. Um, never, we always seem to be struggling to have enough lifeguards to serve the pool, so this is where they come from. We try to get them, you know, they start off in, in swim lessons and they work their way up, and hopefully, you know, the best ones make it through the lifeguard class and end up working for us one day. Also at the pool, the pool got a disproportionate number of announcements on this thing, but the Under the Sea Event, uh, Saturday, April ninth, it's a lot of fun. And that is from twelve-thirty to two-thirty on Saturday, April ninth. And that is a family event, uh, for all ages. Um, I think I might have a couple, oh, oh, a big one too. Um, this didn't make it, but I wanted to share with you. One of the most wonderful programs ever invented is the Junior Giants program that we are participating in once again. And it's absolutely free to the participants, and, you know, my kids have done it for the last three years. It's, it's a really awesome experience for the kids. Uh, we'll have it at Gallert Park, Westlake Park, and also at Bobby Bonds Field at JFK School. Um, the league starts on June thirteenth. Line up, the signups start online at juniorgiants.org starting April eighteenth. We'll also do some registration, uh, at our office. We're always looking for coaches, and it's, it's a ton of fun. It's entirely free to the kids, and, you know, they get a hat and a T-shirt. And if they need gloves, the, you know, Junior Giants, I should say, the Giants Community Fund provides all of the gear, balls, bats, catcher's gear. And like I said, if, if kids need more, they're, they're there to take care of the kids. And we usually get a lot, a full, full group of kids participating in that. And it's a good way to learn the fundamentals of baseball, and, and they, and they play games. It's, but it's, it's all fun, you know.
Um, it says here, coaches are needed, is this a volunteer thing?
It's absolutely a volunteer, yes. Somehow, always manages to work out, kinda like, you know, the ba, we just wrapped up basketball. Um, we're gonna give you a, a full breakdown on that at our next meeting. But, you know, well over a thousand kids, and I forget how many teens, but we'll, we'll tell you next week. All volunteer coaches. Um, summer camp time is here. You may, this may look familiar, this came out in the, the Activity Guide that was recently mailed out. Um, as a parent with two young kids, I am telling you, summer camp is an incredibly competitive deal. Our neighbor to the south, South San Francisco, they have this tradition where the parents line up overnight, the night before registration, uh, opens and it fills up. We, we encourage online registration. We have a lot more going on than South San Francisco does for summer camps. But I'm telling you, they, they will fill up. Um, it's the best deal in town by far. Uh, there's some great, great programs around us that the cost typically is twice what we charge. Uh, I'll just give you an example. Um, at, uh, Galileo, which is a real fine summer camp that runs out of the Brandeis School on Brotherhood Way, they're over four hundred dollars a week now. Uh, San Francisco Zoo, another stellar summer program, it's over four hundred dollars a week. And our base price is, is for the sports camps, um, a hundred and seventy-five, anyway, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to, well, I guess a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and ninety-five dollars there. And then, uh, Aquatics Camp, a hundred and ninety-three dollars. So, we're, we're, they're really high-quality programs, and, uh, just if there's parents that happen to be listening, sign up early because we...
Now, this is the year too where there's not the additional charges for...
For the, for the Summer Youth Recreation Program, we, we tried to fold those costs in. And for Daly City residents, I mean, it's, it's amazing that, you know, if you sign up today, it's, it's a hundred and three dollars a week.
Yeah.
And there's a lot included in that price. That, that is a fraction of the going rate for summer camps.
That's one of the nice things that, that we can say, that the city does provide good opportunities for our children during the summers.
And there is a tennis camp, too.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Very comprehensive, thank you.
And scholarships and discount information is available.
Absolutely, absolutely. Is that, um...
I got a couple more quick, quick, I'm sorry, I'm taking away too much time tonight. But, uh, there's also a spring basketball camp next week. Uh, at War Memorial, my kids have done that one, too, it's a great camp. Uh, Bud Brezner, he's been running that for about five hundred years, I think, and it's, it's top-notch. Great, great program. Registration for that is opening now, I mean, is open now, but that, you know, it starts next week. Um, and I'm gonna put, uh, one other shameless plug in. Our wonderful partners from the Daly City Host Lions Club. Their Pasta Bingo, Friday, April eighth, five thirty-nine, at the Cafe Dolder at Westlake Park. And again, I, I don't normally go out of my way to promote, uh, you know, the many nonprofit groups in Daly City, but without the partnership with the Daly City Host Lions Club, we would not have, uh, Spring Fun Day. So, if you can patronize the Daly City Host Lions Club Pasta Bingo, Dolder Cafe, Friday, April eighth, five thirty to nine P.M., and that is it.
Thank you. Anything else from Commissioner?
No, just to wanna add that, um, uh, the Daly City Council at their last meeting, um, um, did a program to reappoint me as your commissioner for the next couple of years. And, uh, to the council, I'd like to just say thank you for your endorsement of me, and, uh, you'll have me for the next couple of years.
Wonderful, nice.
And, uh, looking forward to serving the community and, um, meeting fine folks like our visitors here today. So, keep coming. It's been a while, to be honest with you, since we've had visitors come speak to us, but, uh, that... Yeah, bring some more, and let us know how we're doing, okay?
And, and I would just say on, on the back of that Pasta Bingo, and since you're in that vicinity, you should grab a flyer, it's the best time ever. It is really, the food's nice, the company's nice, and you get nice little prizes, uh, gift cards for each game. And, uh, and it helps, it all helps the Daly City Host Lions Club. So since you're nearby, uh, we should send you home with one of those invites. Oh, I saw one.
All right, so if there's nothing further, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-sixth at seven. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to enter that motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'd like to second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you ladies very much for your input.
Great.
And you can talk to Denise.
Thank you for this, Ben.
It, it, you know, it's quite lovely.